Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kristy Stanley and I'm also running for Clark County Chair. As a mother of four and business owner of over 10 employees, I feel that although I've got kind of a late start in this race, I am a very well-qualified candidate who is no stranger to the issue. I have a lot of years in managing multiples of business entities at once, so I feel that I have the expertise that it would take to make sure that our government gives fair and equal access to our county council so that they can all have a chance at having their voices heard. Thank you so much.
And thank you, League of Women Voters, for providing this forum this afternoon. My name's Eileen Quiring and I already am on the county council. I represent District 4. I'm the vice-chair of the council. Prior to that, I served on the Clark County Planning Commission as well as the Board of Equalization, both of which I stepped down from once I was elected to this office. I've been a small business owner and employer with eight employees. I've worked in both the public and private sectors. I've sat on nonprofit boards. I graduated from Battleground High School and then George Fox University and was a 1998 distinguished alumnus there. I think that these skills give me the ability to lead the council. Thank you.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for inviting me. I'm honored to be here today to answer questions about the important issues that we're facing in the county. At this point, we have a lot of very important issues we need to be facing with the county, and I'm really excited to be a part of this. And if I can make it through the general and be your representative, we're going to make those changes and we're going to improve this county to be representative of everybody in our county and will provide the services we should be providing at this point. Just thank you. Thank you so much.
My leadership style is both, I think, as a visionary and as a hands-on kind of person. I wouldn't ask someone to do a job that I myself would not do. I think that the ability to improvise, adapt, and overcome has always served me well. The ability to look at individuals for their merits and for their potential, for the types of ideas and solutions that they bring to the table has always been something that I admire about myself, and I seek that in others as well. So, thank you.
Actually, I would say that I'm kind of a team leader. Having been in politics before, you learn that you build bridges, not tear them down. It's very important because you never know when the person that maybe doesn't see eye-to-eye with you on every philosophical thing, there will always be something where you will agree. So, I think it's very important, particularly in the political arena, to always be ready to listen and to try to collaborate any way that you can.
Well, for me, it's important to realize that leadership is not how you get people to follow you, but how you inspire them to be greater people. And so, that's what I do in my leadership groups, is I collaborate with those. I see the talent that lies within all the people that I work with, and we take those talents and turn those into collaborative engagement to where together, we build a greater force and a greater group of people, collaboration. And so, I think that's really the true form of leadership, is to be able to set an agenda, to lay out your path, to hold everyone accountable, but to allow them to create their own path and to become greater parts of that collaborative effort.
All right. First of all, I think that the county administrator must follow the policies set forth by the council, except when to do so would be a deviation in some manner that maybe the council hadn't thought about when they set forth policy. I know that there's been a lot of talk lately and speculation about whether or not the county manager should be not appointed but elected. I've heard a lot of people saying that they would prefer to have an elected county administrator, but I don't know that that would be cost-effective. I think that would be something worth investigating more, because then, that person would then have an obligation to uphold at least the will of the voters and for doing a good job executing the policies on behalf of the council members. And hopefully, that can get resolved in the next couple of years. Thank you so much.
As many of you should know, if you don't know, as just stated, there was a Home Rule Charter passed, and it used to be that commissioners could manage the staff, et cetera. They could do a lot of things, now that the Home Charter has asked that the county manager do that. I was elected since the Home Charter has been in place, and because of that, I have operated under the Home Charter, so it hasn't been that difficult for me to make a change. Those who have sat on the commission as commissioners and now council probably have a little bit more difficulty making that transition, but I think that, actually, I think that we've done a pretty good job. I certainly do not step over the line and try to manage the personnel at all. And it is our job to make policy, and that's what we should do, and it is the manager's job to actually implement that policy.
Well, like Eileen was saying, there's a clear delineation between the legislative branch, which are the councilors, and the executive branch, which is the county manager who executes policies set forth by the council. I think it's important that we respect that rule, the Charter, Home Rule Charter, because that is what was voted upon by the citizens of Clark County by a good majority. So, we need to make sure that the people who are in place in the council are following that charter and making sure that they are not crossing that line and trying to force influence in the staff members in the executive branch in permitting or in code enforcement and other aspects where the county manager is tasked with fulfilling those policies. I think it's important that, I lost my train of thought here, but to follow up with what Eileen was saying, it's just we have a clear delineation. It was voted on, and those who walk the halls and are too friendly with the staff, I know all their names, you know, da-da-da, you're engaging too much then in more than just what a council member's job should be, into trying to force influence onto the staff. And I don't think that is what the intention of the Home Rule Charter was set up for.
Well, I think first of all, I would incentivize businesses to locate here and bring a lot of our commuters back from Portland. I think that the fact that people are living here and working in another city, causing numerable problems, is part of the complex problem of sustainable housing and preventing urban sprawl. I think that, you know, to make sure that land use is promoting affordable housing, but in a manner that takes into consideration the sustainability of keeping the natural feel of Clark County at the forefront of the issue, you know, I think that we could follow a couple of other countries, actually, that have very good examples for innovating ideas and utilizing small spaces and being able to make them work, and that country would be Japan. And there are other areas as well, different parts of downtown Seattle. They've implemented good use of land use, and I think that if we just take a little bit more attention to details and innovation and accepting of other methods and ideas, we could definitely solve this problem.
I think actually one of the largest issues around the Growth Management Act and our comprehensive plan, we have to create a comprehensive plan for our 20 years of growth that's coming up. And I think that we have used the wrong formula, and we are correcting that. We're looking into and correcting the formula. It's a vacant, buildable lands formula. And we also have a population projection that is off by historical numbers. Therefore, when these various calculations are made, they don't take into account the growth that's actually happening. And when that happens, urban growth boundaries are not moved out, and it creates really a false scarcity of land, because there really is land available, but we're not moving boundaries so that that land can be available. That doesn't mean that we go out and pave paradise in the rural area. I'm talking about actually sensible growth, so that when you see the population is going to increase, you need to use the actual numbers that are happening. And so, this is how we need to address, as was mentioned earlier in the earlier debate, the cost of housing is so high because of this scarcity, you know, the supply and demand issue. Well, when you don't have land, the cost of that land goes up. Therefore, the builder, the developer, has to pay more for that land. And actually, the impact statements and everything that goes with it, the housing, is very costly, as was stated, $71,000 per home.
Thank you.
Well, we live in a county of nearly 450,000 people, and for our level of services that we as a county provide to the people of the county, to maintain that level, we have to have continual, steady, and sustainable growth through the county. There are those who want to see absolutely no development whatsoever, and there are those who want to completely overdevelop the county and put up McMansions throughout all the farmland. I think it's important to realize that if we want to fulfill our obligation to the cities, which we do as a county, we have to have slow, sustainable growth, which means, you know, some housing, development for business, but we need to look at staying within the urban growth boundaries of the city, or within the cities and counties. We need to have more focus on affordable housing for families who are now struggling to try to reach that level of $650,000 McMansions that are popping up all over. That's not giving more opportunity to the people who live here for affordable housing. That's making it even tougher to try to get by. So, if we want to have our county continue to grow and to be able to provide the services that we need, we need to keep it smart, sustainable, and I think my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I believe that there could be more promotion of education, either online or in classroom, for these types of endeavors. It is, again, part of the sustainability of keeping a rural feel in high-impact environments where a lot of people are living on top of each other. There's definitely lots and lots of information out there, and we actually have, you know, professors in the college here in Clark County who do and are educated in this topic. So, I think that it's important that there be a public-private partnership to be able to educate people in neighborhoods, or maybe even go and reach out to different neighborhoods that already are established with homeowners associations and covenants and such, and, you know, maybe communicate with them that we would like to reach out to them and think of some various ways that they could better use their spaces. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, actually, statistics show us that most recently, smaller farms are really doing the production. It's really amazing to me that, I know, I actually have a friend who has, I think, two and a half acres. On that farm, she grows organic vegetables. She has sheep, turkeys, chickens, eggs, and various flowers, too. But it's amazing what you can do with land when you actually know how to treat it and to grow various things. So, the farm-to-table idea that many restaurants now are using and that many of us want really is happening throughout, and I think that using our extension service that already exists is very helpful educationally for people to be able to create these small farms. And of course, now with the advent of the Internet and all of the education that you can get in that way, I would say that, you know, you can learn an awful lot about creating a small farm right where you live.
I live on five acres with a few chickens and goats, and we have gardens, and it's a fantastic thing, but it's not a sustainable model for the county. We have 450,000 people in this county and 430,000 acres. Not the greatest at math, but I think that's not a really good balance for everybody running sustainable farms on their own. So, the county needs to come in and be active in developing urban growth areas where we can set up community gardens. With the, I don't know what the number is exactly, I believe $20 to $30 million we spend per year on our Parks Department, a chunk of that should be going into the parks, creating food forests, where people from the community can actually benefit from that food. We can get it back to food banks and people who don't have access and availability to fresh produce. We could be utilizing the land in a much more efficient and effective way rather than just mowing the lawn. So, as a county, we have an obligation to do more for the people who live here and to look long-term and to see when that population reaches 550,000 or 600,000 people, how are we going to make sure that everyone in this community has access to good, organic food at a reasonable and affordable price? We need to support markets, we need to support gardens, and we need to do more as a community to make sure that we're doing everything we can.
I believe that there should be more public-private outreach services, for sure, for newcomers, and I would probably venture to say that the Community Strategic Services Plan, if they don't already have a good outreach program, what I think they do could be expanded on. I think that if it needed an extra office specifically targeted for non-English-speaking persons or newcomers to the area to get acquainted with or find out what services they may need, I think that is probably the best option. Thank you.
My experience at the county tells me that just about any different department that you would call, you are met with very friendly, informative employees. And I would say that I think we're doing a pretty good job now. Now, if you've had a bad experience, come tell me about it, because even though I'm a councillor and we do legislative things, we actually do help our constituents, too. So, I do, I think that I certainly have observed the people in the county council's office who help many individuals, what they call, they are a wealth of information, and so I would support the employees that are already doing such a great job.
I'd agree with Eileen. We have great employees working for the county. They go out of their way to do fantastic work for all of us, but we do need to be more inclusive and have more availability to different people in our community who are joining us. We also need to be a lot more technologically advanced. We need to have easier access and more user-friendly interfaces for the people in the community. As we develop and as we advance in the technological world, we need to realize that we're very few years away from having autonomous cars driving around the county. We need to have the same level of availability and infrastructure in place so that people can just dial in on an app on their phone and make sure that their bills are paid, or to apply for a permit, or to make sure that any other issues that they're having at the county level are easily accessible and easily translatable to any other of the many people that we have in our diverse community. So, I would definitely say that although we are doing well, I think we can do much better.
I would agree with Eric on one point, that there needs to be further discussion about this Chalechi area industrial park expansion, but I'm for it. I think that this goes along with my thinking, that we need to attract more business and industry into our area to bring our commuters back, to get them back from Portland, to let them work where they live. That will help ease the traffic congestion that we all know so well, and, you know, there is, I don't believe, a plan at this point to put industrial waste or hazardous materials on the railway. I know that there was some talk about an asphalt plant, but I don't think that that's been finalized as yet. But again, I am for the development of that area, and I do believe that it should be done, as Mr. Holt says, carefully, with as much community involvement and creative suggestions as possible for the development of that area. But it's all about bringing more jobs here to this county, and it's all about getting an area that doesn't impact, you know, the nature and the farmlands as much as people believe that it does, and promote good jobs, good livable wage jobs.
Thank you for asking this question. First, I have to preface my comments with, what you heard from Mr. Holt is not true at all. He's taking some things that a subcommittee came up with, and no decisions have been made yet. I've been working on this for a year. We have a 33-mile railroad that is an absolute treasure in this county. The ability to bring jobs to this county is wonderful, I think. I've been working to keep tolls off of I-5 and I-205. It's made me even more passionate about the idea that we need our own economic engine. What will be done, as we decide about any of these things that are developed along the railroad, there will be careful consideration of all of the homeowners, of the landowners. There will be buffering, there will be, and they're doing development rules right now. It's going through a process, a subcommittee of, I don't know, maybe 20 people, maybe a few less than 20 people, but many people are involved in this. This is an absolute wonderful opportunity. Rarely do we get an amendment to the GMA. This was an amendment to the GMA that's been worked on for three sessions, and I am excited about the possibilities. The CREDC, which is the Economic Development Group here, had a list of 14 companies that would create jobs along this rail, that need land for jobs, and they would provide hundreds and thousands of jobs. And by the way, they don't give the name of the companies because that's proprietary, but I looked at the types of businesses they were, and they were clean businesses.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, the pros are obviously that you have that development, you get jobs, and you have investment, but there are a lot more cons to this deal than the pros. We are talking about a mile-wide industrial park that's going to be just, I don't know if any of you live in that area, but it's going to be just north of this area, mile-wide, where the farms used to be, where we're going to have industrial businesses developing up in there. We're going to have, on that rail line, potentially very hazardous chemicals being trucked back and forth. So, I think this is something that we have, this is a conversation we need to be having with the people in this community to let them know that, yes, there's going to have this beautiful trail plan that they're going to have going up along with the rail, but there is also a lot more to it than meets the eye, and we need to have an open discussion with all the people in this community to let them know what's going to be happening in their backyards.
No, I do not. I most definitely believe, as I stated previously, that I think that we have an obligation and a duty over the next 20, 30, 50 years to attract more businesses and industries to our county and to be able to provide good-paying jobs to our population, which will generate vital tax revenue and reinvestment in the communities where these people will work and live. You know, having 60-plus thousand people commute to Portland every day is not acceptable. We have to take a strong approach in making our county and our cities affordable, enjoyable, and innovative for future generations.
I would agree that bringing more industry, more jobs to this county would create the revenue. I believe if we, it's stated that because we live next to Portland, we have sales tax seepage, because people do go across the river and buy some of their goods. But, you know, our last budget, we had a $23 million balance, and this is the type of balance that we need to maintain. We can increase the revenue by creating jobs and having more people working here and businesses paying, you know, their property taxes. But we can always and should always be looking for the most efficient use of taxpayer money. And we are going to be doing program-based budgeting this particular year. We're changing from a biannual to an annual budget. I think that is going to benefit us. I think any time that you are dealing with budgets, you have to carefully, even line by line, look at things and programs to make sure that they're doing what they were planned to do when they were created, maybe years ago. Make sure there are not redundancies and overlap of different departments. So, I just promote or say that we should use taxpayer money just as efficiently as we possibly can.
Okay.
So, in Clark County, we have about an $897 million budget, and we have a shortfall looking at close to $11 million. So, the first thing, as people in the community, we don't want our services cut because of that. So, we need to find out how to make up that shortfall for the revenue that comes into the county. One-third of it comes from the state as grants, one-third of it is property taxes, and another third of it comes from the permits and the fees and the operations of the county. So, bringing more jobs to the county is absolutely what we need to do, but there are a lot of available jobs in this county. They're just minimum wage jobs that you can't afford to live in the county if you're working those jobs. So, we need to bring in the infrastructure to make sure that the jobs that are created here are living wage jobs and that they're provided to provide the families who will work with benefits and sustainable growth. But we don't need to have the county filled with industry to make sure that we provide those jobs. We have a huge port with an immense amount of growth potential, hundreds of acres just past the new development that's already allocated for heavy industry. So, why would we want to pull all of that through the county when we have a place allocated for that, where we can get people working, great-paying jobs in the county, and not have to have the 71,000 to 75,000 people have to drive over the bridge every day to find good-paying jobs?
I feel like a person needs to leave their Sunday best and their power suit at home when they show up for work in public office. I don't believe that the current council is comprised of this ability. I feel that, as Mr. Holt does, that everyone deserves to be heard. Everyone needs to put aside their own personal preferences and ideologies and really intently listen to the different perspectives presented. I think it's important to not focus so much on what divides us, rather than focus on where we have shared perspectives. I think it's important that a chairperson be fair and balanced with their time in reminding the council, you know, that we are here to serve the community. We are here to actually get a job done. We're here to solve the problems that the citizens themselves aren't going to do without our help. We work for them. I think that the community should not have to spend their time as almost a part-time job, keeping an eye on government to make sure that it serves them and works for them.
I think it's very, very important that you maintain building bridges and not breaking them down. I think at this point in time, our county council is quite civil. I think that we have good decisions, I mean, good discussions about the decisions that we make, and I just plan on going forward with that kind of atmosphere. I think you need to be collegial, and I do think that you should have, you should be able to talk about differences in issues, but it should be in a very collegial and friendly environment so that nobody's attacking anybody verbally, or physically, for that matter, like they do in some of these places I might have seen on TV.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
I think it's incredibly important as chair to make sure that you are listening to the other voices that are valuable and important. Everybody has something valuable to add to the discussion, and everybody who's sitting on the council has experiences in their life and a perspective that's important to listen to as a group. And to be collaborative, you all get to share those and not be disrespectful to anybody because you might disagree with a point of view. Nobody is wrong or less valuable than anyone else. It's important to hear all of the voices and to vet that as a group, and that's what I would do as chair, is I'd get our group together, discuss the issues, and determine what is the best decision we can come to for the people of Clark County and not for our own personal interests.
Again, thanks for everybody coming out today. It's important. I have been encouraging as many people as I can, when I come into contact with them at restaurants or either online forums or in public events like this, to make sure that you are telling your friends to get out and vote on August 7th. If they're not on vacation in Nashville, they need to be, you know, out and voting. You know, as a mother, I care about our children. I care about their future. I care about, you know, what happens to them when they graduate from school. I care about them being able to have, you know, the American dream that has been afforded to many of us in this room. I I really hope that you will see that I have the experience, the knowledge, and the tenacity to do a good job for all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks again for coming out on this hot afternoon. I'm actually working really hard to promote policies that will bring job creators here. I stand on principles of small government, operating within a reasonable budget, and protecting the most vulnerable among us. I support lower taxes, maintaining vital county services, and implementing additional transportation for the growth that we have, and sensible land use policies that will protect both our rural and urban landowners. We're blessed to live here in Clark County, this is my childhood home, my voting record is proof that I'm a principled leader, and I would ask, humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you once again for having us today, and very much so thank all of you for showing up. This is a hot day where we could all be doing much other things with our time, and for you to show up and have that engagement is incredibly important to me. I think it's important to recognize the diversity in our community, to let everybody's voice be heard, to know that there are more than the status quo in our environment. We have to all be participants in democracy, it's not a spectator sport, you've got to get your hands dirty, you've got to be a part of it. And so, I applaud all of you for showing up. I think it's important to realize that right now, this county is not doing the work of the people that it should be doing. We need to have an animal control working for us, which we have not hired a manager for that position yet, or code enforcement. Right now, we have people in Livingston Mountain who are afraid of encroachment and the mining industry coming into their land and laying overlays, because they, the state of Washington believes that those minerals are more important than the people's ownership. So, I just want to thank you for all of you for your time, and encourage you to meet with me later, and I'd be glad to talk more.